...period, but I'm going to look further before I tell you, no, you can't.
And we'll just wait, sure.
If you can give me just a little more time to clarify that. It may not be that there's authority anywhere to do it.
Okay, just like the next...
Except unless the mayor wants to knock down a building to stop a fire that's raging through town.
So you want this for the next meeting or two more?
Next week meeting, if you would, please.
Motion to postpone.
Does that move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Move some of the new business, Mr. David Casalotto will be up first as amended in the agenda.
Motion to discuss.
Yes, a motion to discuss.
Discuss or present or...
He'll move his stuff or get what he needs to.
Coming over, David.
Let's get over.
Where are you gonna need that at?
Need to get out here.
Right here?
Right on that corner.
Look at that.
Oh, okay. What's the water?
We got any samples or anything?
Water samples.
Water samples down here.
I got some right here.
I've flavored my water with coffee.
We'll wait for the water.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it is, and blood.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Need a little shampoo on your side.
Yeah, that's okay.
We'll wait for the water to be on the floor.
How are you?
Hi, well, David's warming up. My name's Jamie Frollick and I'm on the Springs Committee. The handout that's being passed down to you all contains a table and that table describes water quality monitoring data that we've been collecting over about six years. It's just a snapshot and what we found, bottom line, is that all the springs that we have tested in Eureka show some level of bacterial contamination and this is suggestive of the state of our groundwater. Now, if you look at the rightmost column, which is E. coli, E. coli is only found in the gut of warm-blooded mammals and that's including humans. So I would ask that as you look at this data, you keep in mind that as we go forward with looking at infrastructure issues in the city, that we have data that suggests that the possible effluent of broken sewage lines could be responsible for the data that we're getting. And so really, that's all.
What's the benchmark for E. coli, for example? I'm looking down here, I see Lake Leatherwood at 1299. We probably assumed that you were at the beachfront there where the gooses are.
Well, for recreational, I believe the Department of Health says 200 or less, so...
So that's the benchmark, you're going with 200 or less, okay.
Right. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact myself. My email is on the bottom or any member of the Springs Committee. Now, David Casalotto.
Thank you. David?
Can we hit the lights? Can we get the lights there, Nick? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Mayor and Councilman.
Move the microphone somewhere else.
I will. Do we have enough room?
There we go.
Is that good?
Yeah.
It's better.
Get me started.
I'm David Casalotto, Executive Director of Ozark's Water Watch. We're a nonprofit water quality organization and we work on a wide area from the headwaters of the White River all the way to the Bull Shoals Dam. And even though we're nonprofit, we do not need a parking place, so don't worry about that with me. What I do work on is protecting the water quality in the basin and all the streams and tributaries that go into there. And I'm here tonight just for informational purposes, just to tell you one of the things that's happened in the basin in Stone County, Missouri around Table Rock Lake. EPA has found, real quick, just nationwide, that around 55 percent of our rivers and streams do not support healthy aquatic life. A lot of it is nutrients. I know we talked about E. coli, but you also have nutrient problems when you have wastewater or different issues that flow into the waterways. So both of those are a hazard. I'm gonna leave you with some status of the watershed reports and also a brochure. We do monitoring throughout the basin just to try to answer the question annually, how's the water in our lakes and rivers? We use monitoring organizations and we use volunteers. This last year, in 2012, we did 4,000 measurements on 160 different locations at 1,600 different events. We produce a map that is also online. That address will be in the brochure I'm gonna leave with you. And we do testing and, as you can see, all through the basin. This is Beaver Lake down here, Table Rock, Bull Shoals, as the White River makes its way through Arkansas, Missouri, and back into Arkansas. Again, those are just some of the organizations, more organizations that supplied the data. Like I said, we do use volunteers because monitoring can be very expensive when you hire done. And while volunteers may not give the same level of scientific quality, if they find a hotspot or a problem, then you can monitor at the locations that seem to need that extra sampling. We do a lot of invertebrate sampling and chemical sampling. Invertebrates, if you're not sure, you just count the number of different types of aquatic bugs, really, in a river and it's very, very indicative of the percentage you have of each type of bug, the water quality you have in that area. We do Stream Smart in Arkansas, it's called. And like I said, nutrients were entering our waterways around Table Rock Lake. Nutrients were causing algae blooms. EPA placed Table Rock Lake on the 303D list of impaired water bodies. And when I moved here in around 2000, there was a fish kill on Table Rock Lake that could be part of the nutrient problem. You can have water in the lake that looks like that or like that and that's impacts of nutrients, the algae growing. And phosphorus, it really causes the problem in our lakes can come from municipal treatment plants, which is called a point source or septic system, stormwater runoff, commercial fertilizers on yards in the city, poultry litter or manure, other land operations or just land disturbance because there's nutrients in the soil. There's around Table Rock Lake, we had a lot of these, we still have a lot of these old gallon, 500 gallon rusted out tanks that we're in the process of replacing. And the health hazard, as I was talking about, can contaminate well and groundwater or springs as we were talking here and have harmful pathogens and bacteria and cause unsafe swimming condition, lakes and streams, or unsafe drinking water. You can see the dogs are kinda walking around in this yard. This early on in my career, I was called to this yard and that's, they're walking in raw sewage from a surfacing septic tank and very unsanitary situation. I live near here. It's not my house, but there is a house up here on the bluffs and I've called those poop sickles. The people do not realize, I'm sure they have a problem, but as their septic effluent filters down, it hits this very hard rock ridge and then you can see it makes its way through that crack and down here. If this bluff was not here, if you can imagine this rock being here, the wastewater would follow the cracks and make it into our drinking water and our groundwater very, very quickly, which does happen. Just some more, when the lake was low a few years back, all these are in front of houses and you can see the impact of the septic systems that do not have the proper amount of soil and so they impact either the lakes or the groundwater or the springs. Again, there's a house, you can see the lake level's normally up here and you can see how the effluent travels straight down. The people smell nothing, see no problem, but the effluent goes right to the water. Anytime you see that green slimy, you can pretty well figure that's septic effluent. Old metal tanks, this one was installed under somebody's deck. These people had a tank that collapsed, so they just cut the pipe off and let it run outside the back door of raw sewage.
What do I need to do?
We replaced some systems with an advanced treatment. This is aeration unit here that does treat the water to a higher level. In a glass, it would look like it's drinking water. It still is not available for drinking. It still needs further treatment and what we do is use drip irrigation. And each drip emitter puts out a little bit of water per day, two foot apart, two foot this way, two foot this way. And that's one of the ways you can actually import soil if you do not have a correct amount of soil and you can put drip tubing and it will work properly. This is the main system being installed in Stone County area. There's the restaurant strip field. We imported about two, we're gonna import total of a little over two foot of soil, cover that up once we're done. Basically, instead of septic effluent, we're putting clean water out into the drip, into the soil. Once it passes through a foot of soil, it's pretty well cleaned up. This is iced tea colored because it's going through peat moss and the tan and stains that with that brown color, but you can see how clear it is and how you can see through it. So I say all that to lead to this point. In Stone County, Missouri, the Health Department decided that we have to start somewhere. We have a lot of failing septic systems and even when a house sells and changes hands, there's nothing to ensure that the new owner will start out with a working system. And so there was an ordinance passed by the local regulatory agency, which is the Stone County Health Department, to require operating permits for advanced systems so they would at least maintain them, but then to require that at the time the property sells, there is a septic tank inspection and if it's needed to be repaired or replaced, then that happens. And that's been going on since 2011 and many, many systems are being repaired. What happens is the buyer knows that that inspection's gonna happen, so before they ever put the house up for sale, they will get the inspection. If they need to fix a system, they will fix it. And so we had a lot of problems with the Realtors saying, you're gonna kill the sale, this is not gonna work. So the ordinance was passed with the understanding that the buyer or the seller can fix it and it can happen a year after, up to a year after the sale takes place, if needed. And so once this went into place, after six months, the Realtor said, this is working, we're behind it. The ones that, the one person that was most outspoken, she now says, this is a good deal. It's a good thing we did it. So these inspections at time of property transfer is working. Again, I'm not gonna read all this to you, we don't have time, but this is just part of the ordinance, which I can supply to you. I believe there's a link to it on some information that was supplied to you by email earlier this week, but it talks about how the system works, how the property transfer works. There are exceptions. If the system is younger than 10 years and it was properly installed, you do not need an inspection. If it's changing hands within a family members, you do not need to do the inspection. So there are some different ways that it doesn't have to happen, but it, like I said, it has been working very effectively. I was just going to a trust, different things like that. We also have a variance committee. Any ordinance you enact, every situation is a little bit different and so the variance committee can grant an exception if there's circumstances that warrant it. We do some other registration. We have penalties and remedies for people that do not follow the ordinances and we do actively look for violations and do investigations and the county attorney will prosecute if needed, if people will not do that. Each state has minimum standards, each county can have stricter rules. I believe we need, not just county, city can have stricter rules and we need to realize the need for maintenance and for the time of ownership transfer of inspections. One thing that has been talked about here, I understand, and like I said, I just bring this for information, is that you could modify this concept of inspections and you could actually say that you also could inspect the hookup to the sanitary sewer and make sure it was not leaking, that there was not stormwater being introduced into your sewer system and that could be done at time of sale also and transfer. The good thing about the time of sale is that there's usually money available in the loan process when the property changes hands. So I'm just here for information, just kind of give you a little update on what's happening in county in Missouri and maybe help start the dialogue towards how you could head towards this type of situation.
Mr. Weaver.
I just wanna thank him for bringing this to our attention because that's a very good process to address septic tanks that we can't get on the main sewer system and it's an excellent idea that we should incorporate as a city.
Thank you.
What is the minimum allowable coliform count? You said 200 for the E. coli, but what is the minimum for coliform? I'm looking at the...
Yeah, and I didn't prepare that document.
Okay.
That's Frollick.
And it differs from state to state also. In Missouri, 126 is actually the E. coli count. I believe the coliform count in Missouri is 225, so it varies a little bit from state to state, but maybe we can find...
We don't know what our local is, or somebody knows, somebody works in a sewer plant.
Her website's on the bottom of that paper.
What?
Her website is on the bottom of that page, her email.
Well, yeah, okay, so Jackie Frollick knows, but I wanted to know now because it looks to me like Lake Leatherwood is polluted. It's not, it can't be used for recreational purposes.
Hi. Sorry, your question is?
What is the allowable minimum for coliform count?
Well, it depends on if you're describing drinking water or recreational waters.
Recreation.
Well, it is 200.
200 for coliform and E. coli?
No, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 200 for E. coli, 1,000 for coliform.
1,000.
As described for, by the Arkansas Department of Health.
Well, it's still, Lake Leatherwood is way over that, so it's not...
Yes.
...fit to swim in.
Right. We need, there was only one test done. We like to do multiple tests before we make any type of conclusions. And again, a lot of this is, it's difficult to test in this manner and walk away and say yes definitively. I think for, in the case of like Harding Spring or Magnetic, we've gotten those values over and over again, so we feel some comfort. But a single test or two tests is not really sufficient.
Yeah, okay.
And we would need to go to various places on the lake as well.
Okay, well, I understand Leatherwood is getting control of the geese. They're getting the geese underhand. Actually, came up with a brilliant solution, what I heard, they're using a sprinkling system. And the geese don't like to be rained on, so they're leaving, which is, I mean, how easy can it get?
Sprinkling with buckshot?
A sprinkling system. It turns on every once in a while and the geese just don't like it, so they leave.
It's Jamie Frollick, not Jackie.
Anyhow. I know you all, you're my sister. That's all I wanted.
Thank you very much for the presentation and as we look at the issue of infrastructure, the ordinance and all that you brought is very interesting and the fact that you also addressed hookups, because with some other issues as far as backflow preventers and things like that, that's a great time to look for those properties that might be at risk, is at the point of sale and then maybe we wouldn't be having some of these backflow issues that we've been discussing. So your reference material is excellent as we move forward, thank you.
The handouts will just talk about my organization and that information, back on the back of there, so.
Okay, any further from Mr. Casalotto? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'll get my equipment out of your way.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
And I think it's your turn.
Want to take a break while he's doing this or?
You call it.
Make a motion to our 10-minute recess?
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Take a quick 10-minute break. We'll be back in session. Moves us to number two now, which is discussion of the Clean City Workshop debate.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, we need to set a workshop. We have a draft of up to number five on a new ordinance that it's called Clean City Nuisance Ordinance, which is a outgrowth and an expansion of the discussion of an old process that was under review in the city in the past of demolition by neglect. That is morphed into something that brings together all of the issues regarding maintenance of lawns and uses of the vehicles that don't run and boats and scavenged vehicles and how your yard looks and the nuisance, all together into one. And we just need a workshop and at that point, prior to the workshop, I will get draft number five ordinance. Glenn and I have worked on this and Bobby Ray has had an opportunity up to this point to look at all five drafts. I haven't had any feedback from him yet, but Glenn gave some good feedbacks specific to the HDC and how to handle stuff. So anyway, I would like to set up a workshop so this can be presented.
So move.
Is that a motion?
Yes, to have a workshop, so.
Your second?
Second.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
And can we beg for Diane's help on that one too? Or should we do it our own?
When are we, are we sitting at a date for this or what?
Is that a motion? Is that a motion? Thank you, Diane.
Moves us to number three, discussion of rezoning number 80 Mountain Street from C3 and remove it from R1 as a...
Motion to discuss? Second.
Floor is open.
Somewhere in our stuff, we were handed a resolution to do that. I thought I read it.
It's a bad ordinance.
An ordinance, yeah, that's it, there it is.
Okay.
So I forget what, how James uses those words.
You have to give it a number and place it on its first reading.
I move to give the ordinance a number and...
Place it on its first...
Place it on its first reading.
Say a can.
This is only for this part.
May I insist it?
Yes.
Will we do a real call though?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll take a workshop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2190. Pardon?
2190.
2190.
Zero, okay. Thank you.
An ordinance removing 80 Mountain Street from the religious use list, where as it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to remove 80 Mountain Street from the list of buildings used for religious purposes in R1. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that 80 Mountain is hereby removed from the list of buildings used for religious purposes in R1. Section 2, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
I move to approve ordinance number 2190 on its first reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Can we discuss this now?
You missed your chance.
Well, this is not what is on the agenda.
That's half of what's on there.
This ordinance, I don't know, can I talk here? Am I out of order?
Yes.
Well, I'm just pointing out, it's not on the agenda, what we're discussing.
It's a two-part item on the agenda.
But it isn't in the ordinance, that part. This ordinance has nothing about rezoning this to C3.
No, it's because it's two different issues on the same topic.
It's, we just removed it from R1, listing a building used for religious purposes, but we didn't discuss rezone to C3 because it's already rezoned to C3. I'm not too sure why we're even gonna discuss that.
We haven't done it officially, I think, is the problem. It was done by court order.
Oh, that was an ordinance, that was, that's right. That's what they said, it was, the court did it, but we didn't do it by ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But we don't have an ordinance here, so I guess we need to ask to have an ordinance drafted, I guess, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just running my mouth.
That's okay, I'm listening to you two. Okay, so the one you just passed, or the one you, 2190, is titled, what again? Because I don't have a copy of it.
An ordinance removing 80 Mountain Street from the religious use list. Yeah, for some reason I have two copies.
Okay, maybe.
I don't know why.
So do we need to make a motion to request an ordinance for the other one, Mr. Weaver, or?
It's two separate incidents, so yeah, probably so.
I guess better. I make a motion that we request the city attorney to draft an ordinance rezoning out 80 Mountain Street from the court-ordered C3 designation to city ordinance, something. To be done by city ordinance.
Your second?
I'll second that.
May I insist, and now we have discussion, Mr. McLuhan.
Yeah, does that, is the way it's done off the court order, that has not been applied at all to, it hasn't been codified, I guess, it's not in our books anywhere, or it is or is not?
Can we ask you that, Beverly?
It would not go into the code book. It is the correct thing to do to follow up with an ordinance. I mean, it wouldn't show up in the code book, it would show up on the zoning...
Twenty years from now, it still wouldn't show up. Nobody would know.
It's the next step in the process. It does need to happen.
Just in, so for a reference, it needs to tie back to the court order?
Yes.
In the ordinance? I would assume.
Any further? Okay. This is on to number four then.
We have to vote on that?
Thought you just did it.
We voted on the first one, but he made a motion to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance to rezonate 80 Mountain Street reflecting the court order of a C3 designation.
Second.
We already did all that.
I think we already did on it.
Yeah.
Just need a vote.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Mr. Weaver, it's up to you now. All right. Now that brings us to number four, new business, discussion definition of intimate theater.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Floor is open.
The, from planning, at some point, I'm not too sure, probably two or three meetings ago, before the discovery in the ordinances of a justified... ago, before the discovery in the ordinances of a justified existence of the theater in the gavioli, planning came up with the definition of intimate theater that they passed and asked to come to counsel. And I'm not too sure if you have it here, so I'll read it briefly for this presentation. They had a definition called intimate theater that they wanted to add to C. 3. And that they call a building used for dramatic presentations, stage entertainment, musical concerts, or the presentation of motion pictures. The maximum capacity equals four times the number of onsite parking spaces at the theater. No food or drink to be offered for sale at the site. So I guess the question is, since a specific concern with the property has been addressed and laid to rest, do we still want to add intimate theater that planning had, or we want to just leave that to C. 3, or we want to just leave it alone?
Mr. McCollum.
I guess at this point, I'd just like to ask Mr. Mitchell what has happened. I don't know what's happened.
The gavioli was found to fall under, and I don't have the wording, a couple of the, I'm going to mess this up really bad. Look at the attorney smiling because he knows I'm going right into some deep stuff. They, they, the gavioli met some of the definitions that were already in existence, and therefore is able to offer their artistic performances under a workshop-studio arrangement. So they're in, they're, they're functioning. They are able to continue under the wording that's there.
The guy's teaching magic? Is that what he's doing, or something?
I think it is the interactive magic workshop, yes. Something like that. And it is, it is going on, and it evidently is legitimate and legal, and it is, it is functioning. And the, some of the concerns that the citizens had that were close to that area, Mr. Moyer and the Crescent LLC are addressing with a fence, reducing the parking, et cetera. And at this time, planning is working on, and I think we have it here for later, they're working on some of the restrictions regarding animals and hours of operation. And I think they've come up with a new definition that I think we'll probably be discussing at the next meeting, that they want to make a change in the C. 3. And I think, and I don't have the exact wording. It has to do with the hours of operation from 7:00 to 9:00, and the strictness of that. And they've come up with, which is, it sounded very good when I listened to it on planning. So again, that's something we need to bring next time. But the bottom line is, is that the theater is, the theater, art workshop, studio is functioning. It seems to be working on issues that the resident neighbors were concerned about, and it's progressing through planning. So I'm not too sure we need to add intimate theater at this time unless somebody had another argument.
I would still like to hear what Mr. Weaver has to say on that. I'm not, I mean, I'm just, this is, I mean, what was, you interpretate, interpret that ordinance to cover that?
Well, the definitions that are in our book call into question somewhat what exactly the studio is and isn't. And at one point, I was asked by the police department what they should do. And there was some discussion at that time, back and forth. There was some discussion from the owners of the one theater there, or studio, or whatever they want to call it. And at the time, there was, there is some hesitancy if we went to court, whether we would win or not. But it's something that could go to court. We could charge them with violation of our ordinance. And I think there's some still ongoing discussion, and I actually spoke with our planning commission chair earlier today about this. I think there needs to be some changes. And I think the planning commission has agreed that there still needs to be some changes to what's there. But I, I mean, I don't want to put words in our chairman or the planning commission as a whole's mouths, but I don't think that everyone is exactly happy with the definition that's there is not being violated.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if they're selling tickets for a performance, then that's performance theater. I mean, that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I think it's great that the neighbors and they're trying to work that all out, but, but you know, that's, that reminds me too much of this, of the deal that we went through just recently about the, about the renting places out for a week, you know? It's, it's, it's bending the rules to make somebody happy, and, you know, I just, I just don't, I don't like it. I mean, I, I just, I mean, if it fits, it fits, okay. But, but I'm kind of skeptical that it really doesn't fit.
It takes a very broad definition to fit. And honestly, if they were ticketed, it's a case that could be presented to a court, and a court would have to make a decision whether to make a broad interpretation or a narrow interpretation. If they made a narrow interpretation, I don't believe it fits the definition, and it would probably sustain a criminal charge.
And I say this, you know, to clarify it, it's just that, you know, I, I don't mean to single it out, but I just, it just, I don't know. They knew what the rule was in the first place, before the theater was ever put in. And, and, and they took their chance in running it, and then all of a sudden, it comes up with this. You know, I'm just not real, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a sneak around the backside. So that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Snyder.
As it's written right now for the C. 3, and I don't have the ordinance right now in front of me, but it sits there and says, as part of a studio workshop, whatever, that theater is included. The way it's being referred to in this law is not as a performance theater, it's as a teaching theater. And this is where the clarification needs to come in, because this is not a teaching theater. They do not teach you magic. They perform magic. So that part, no, that's not in compliance with the law, trying to use that. The intimate theater that we got from planning in regards to the changes they would like made, some of those changes are fine, but it needs to have a time limit added. There is absolutely no time limit on there, and that was one of the biggest complaints we got from the neighbors, was the time period. And even though presumably they are going along with what the neighbors said and trying to start it earlier and end it earlier, I've already had several calls on a couple of different weekends that they were performing well past 9:00. So before we can do an ordinance, we need a time limit, minimum, for the intimate theater thing.
Mr. Mitchell.
The time limit is not in the definition. The time limit is under restrictions. It's very specific, separate, and there, that is under discussion. And at this time, there is, the library doesn't close at 9:00. The restaurant does not close at 9:00. They're still taking, inceding people, and they're still leaving at 10:00 and thereafter. This selective interpretation and enforcement directed towards one establishment I find to be most interesting. Likewise, the interpretation of those restrictions, does that mean that the tourist lodging, people that have tourist lodging shouldn't be letting, that are in C. 3, and there's about 25 or 30 of them? Does that mean that they should not be checking in guests into their tourist lodging after 9:00 at night? Or on the issue of animals? What about those tourist lodging that allow guests to bring dogs? Does that restrict them also? And that's some of the stuff that planning has been discussing. And what I'm having a difficulty with right now, after listening to the attorney, is I was very clearly told that the attorney and the police chief met, and the discussion was that the gavioli met that definition and therefore could continue. So what I'm having little difficulty with right now is understanding the attorney's opinion that he's putting forth here, which seems to differ with the opinion that I heard that came from the police chief that supposedly involved him and Jack Moyer.
Beverly, you want to plan your process?
You are exactly right, and all of those are issues, and all of those have been at the planning table. The issue today on your agenda is the definition of intimate theater that we would like added to our code book, and we would like to put into C. 3 as a conditional use. And the reasoning behind this is not, it did come out of the 80 Mountain Street discussions, but it's not just about that. Everything that we're getting, all the feedback that we're getting from our planners' web and the, and the information that we as planners get, tell us that the most successful cities and the best cities, and what big cities are trying to go from and back to, are things that have things in their neighborhood or close to their neighborhood. And most of them sound like they built all the big asphalt, you know, parking lots for Walmarts and K. Mart's and movie theaters, and now they're trying to get rid of those and go back to a town like ours. And so when we were thinking about our neighborhoods, it would be good for neighborhoods to have things like intimate theater, or a small grocery store, or something that the neighbors could enjoy and could go to as long as they were within the boundaries of those C. 3. Now, the other things that you're getting to, I sent you out that this week and asked you to add it to another agenda about the restrictions in quiet commercial, and that was talked about today, but that's for the next agenda. Because we do want restrictions on it, and we do talk about those restaurants and the times, and we do talk about, you know, checking in a guest early or late. But today, we do think intimate theater is a good idea. We do think that if it was just put in as a conditional use for C. 3, that, that would be a good thing for our city. As far as whether or not something is legal or not, our definition of studio at this present time says arts-oriented business. That's a big stroke. And we are changing that, and we are working with that, and we're going to bring definitions to you. But again, that's another issue at another meeting.
Mr. Brick, I can hand it first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to add conditional use in C. 3 titled intimate theater, and the definition set forward here by the planning commission chair.
Second.
May I second? You refer to discussion on that? Mr. Mitchell.
I don't mind the definition of intimate theater being added to C. 3. I'm not too sure why it has to be added as a conditional use. Why don't we just add it as a definition? What's the rationale for that?
Just as a permitted use.
It's just a permitted use?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I think it ought to be a permitted use, that's all.
The planning commission just thought that each person in the neighborhood that was around that should be able to weigh in on that, and that's why we put it in conditional use. The neighborhood itself would have more of an understanding of what goes on in that neighborhood than we did. That's why we thought it should go in conditional use instead of just outright permitted.
Mr. Vina.
I think what we're going through right now with the property in question begs a CUP. It's obvious that it's a controversial issue in that neighborhood, and we should not force the neighborhood to accept things that they don't find amenable to their neighborhood. So I agree, it should go with a CUP.
Intimate theater has been included in what, C. 1 and C. 2? It was left out of C. 3 for some reason. I don't have the, the code book in front of me, but I seem to remember, I wondered why it was left out of there since it was in the other C. 1 and C. 2. Am I, am I on the right track here? No? Where is this included? What zoning?
Intimate theater is brand new. It's never been there before. We've never had anything like this.
Okay, then what am I thinking of? Small theater events?
Small entertainment. Or large entertainment?
Small entertainment.
Has always been in commercial.
Okay, small entertainment is in the commercial. So I often wondered why it was left out of C. 3, since it is in the other ones. And small entertainment, we don't define it, but if it's in the gavioli chapel, it has to be small because they only seat, what, 75 people? So you're not going to get very big. But there, there, we have to, I mean, some of the objections to this are, are sort of specious because they are objecting more to the people operating the theater than the theater itself. I had an email, for instance, objecting to people unlocking their cars after 9:00 at night, because this was a terrible thing to live with, because when you push that little thing, it makes a beep, and this is very disturbing. So there shouldn't be any unlocking of cars after 9:00. Well, I think that is pretty ridiculous. I mean, we have to-